Divine present to be with us as we engage in discussion on matters of importance. Grant us the wisdom to listen to one another with open hearts, seeking to understand points of views different from our own. May our words be filled with kindness and respect, reflecting your love and grace. Lord, we invite your wisdom to guide our decision, aligning them with your will. Let your peace surpass all understanding rule in our hearts and bring unity among diverse viewpoints. Help us to discern your direction clearly and to move forward in harmony. Ladies, gather and be fruitful, leading to the outcome that glorify your name and benefits those we serve in Jesus' name. Amen. Good evening. Want to thank everyone for joining this special call meeting. I know your schedules are busy and I appreciate you all making this time concerning some urgent matters that we need to take care. So we need to discuss several concerning issue, first one being the new detention center's construction repair recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, we discussed the three or four different delivery methods and I expressed I still wasn't certain on which way I wanted to recommend and suggest that we go forward. But we also needed to administratively prepare some things prior to choosing to do design build for the repair of the current facility. Since that time, after doing some more research and talking to some more folks, it is my belief that the most economical, and when I mean economical, I'm talking about both financially, but also in time, and makes the most sense for us to go with the design build for not only the repair on the, our current facility, but also in the design and construction of our new facility. So this evening, our request is going to be that we vote to move forward with the design build. We've also provided you with for your review so that you can see staff's determination of both the criteria. There's six areas of criteria that the statute requires us to set forth and to establish. And that's the criteria that we have to go through and justify in order to be able to verify and justify the use of design build. And so that's what you have before you this afternoon is both the criteria and then the county's position and justification on why design build is the best way to go forward with this. And so ultimately, the request for this board is to vote and to authorize staff to move forward with issuing an RFQ. That's a request for qualifications for the design build team for both the remodel of the current detention center, but also the design and construction of the new facility.
Chair, you want a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
I'm making that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion?
Yes, just a question. Now, we're currently, we have some things that we're doing, some repairs that we're making. Can we continue to do those things while we're in this process?
Precious. So I would say yes, and Frankie and I have been having discussions. My only concern is us doing work that may need to be redone or something that's not in compliance with what the architect comes in, architect or the construction managers come in and say that we need to do certain things. So at minimum, we will continue to do work. I just don't want to spend a lot of money on things that may not be done correctly. I think that's why we're in the situation that we are now, using subcontractors without an architect to oversee the work historically. That's my opinion, of course, but I do think that we should wait until we're through this process to actually do the work that requires, I guess, architects and the construction managers. But we will continue things on the list. Absolutely. We won't stop.
Well, we have a timeframe with, after this, if they're in our favor, would they come in and start the process?
So the RFQ, actually, I worked on that over the weekend and had Jonathan review it for me, but we have to go back and do some more work on the RFQ because the design build is a little bit different. It's not just a RFQ that you can throw together. It's a lot of information that's entailed in RFQ. So we plan to get that out on Tuesday. The minimum advertisement time is seven days, I do believe, and if we only get one response, we do have to do an additional seven days. So we're looking at a maximum of two weeks from this Thursday. Yes.
Just let me clarify a few things. We need a total of three responses on their initial RFQ. If we do not get a total of three, then we have to re-advertise for a like number of days. If we get only one on either the, on the first and or the second, then that is adequate so long as you've advertised the request two times and not just the one. The other thing that I'll tell you is, Commissioner Bremet, there are certain things that we are allowed and permitted to do in this situation, but because of the amount of time and the amount of work that has not been done in the current condition of the facility, the expected dollar amounts puts this into the range to where the statutes require us to have a designer, a licensed designer, whether it be an architect or an engineer, involved in that process. And so we're able to do some of the things, but a lot of it were constrained by statute because of those requirements as well. And obviously, the total amount would require a lot of this to go out to bid, which typically involves an architect or an engineer on these types of repairs.
Did we determine the scope or would the design bill, whoever we do that, determine the scope?
The scope for the repair of the facility has been written and is couched under the terms of the minimum amount required to comply with both the inspection deficiencies and minimum operational requirements underneath the state and federal guidelines.
And that's all of it. So the RFQ, they would come in and determine?
That's correct. That's right. And, and do the inspection to determine the extent of what needs to be done, not just saying, if they say we need a new roof, they come in and will inspect it and determine, do we need a new roof? Or is it not even the roof that's leaking? Is it someplace else that water's infiltrating? So it's things like that. So rather than, than saying to come in and do what the deficiencies say need to be done, we're going to have them come in, inspect, determine, and then complete the minimum repairs necessary.
Jonathan, can I ask this question on the design bill method that we're getting ready to use? Are there other places that have used this, this particular method?
Yes, sir. There are several, especially detention centers, jails that across the state that have used this particularly because of the uniqueness of what they are. And I think we've all seen this over the past couple of years in trying to just get subcontractors to come in and do work. It's, it's hard. This is a, a unique specialty area, which is why I believe the design build is the way to go for not only the repairs, but also ultimately where we came into the design and the building of our new facility. I believe that everything that that process provides allows for much more efficient, quicker. And in this scenario, I believe the same cost or maybe even less because we've got, we'll have the same folks doing everything for us instead of just one. But, but ultimately, we will get a product that is designed to be run efficiently, well-maintained, and not going to say easy, but practical in seeking repairs as and when they become necessary.
I have no problem with, with what we're going to do. I guess what I was wanting, wanted to know was that this particular method, you said the end product, those folks that have done it, are they satisfied? Or is it, is it a model kind of thing that when you look at what they've done, are they pleased with what the outcome?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I do know Stanley County did their jail renovations in 2023, or actually in the process of doing their renovations right now through design bill as well.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, I mean by Commissioner Hester and a second by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
And so the next agenda item is detention center deficiencies. So we had a meeting last Monday and we didn't get the opportunity to discuss the meet the letter that was addressed to the sheriff's office as well as myself and the commissioners on April 1st. And so in that first letter, there was an order to depopulate the facility down to 20 inmates and then no more than additional 12, I do believe. And it was also an order to focus on supervision rounds, address contraband, address staffing, submit a plan of correction to, to the state as well as, and so we recently got another letter on April the 11th, which was Friday, that says that the sheriff's office has to have an additional 20 staff members or 20 law enforcement officers or 20 law enforcement officers or deputies, I'm sorry. So we're looking for clarification from the state on that because I don't know if law enforcement officers are the same definition as detention officers or not. So since we've been having these conversations, our staff has been working with the sheriff's officers, trying to determine the best plan of action. But I do want to invite Mitchell up just to discuss where they are with the, with the corrective actions at this time or the order.
Good afternoon, boys. Can y'all hear me? Again, I appreciate y'all whittling the time in your schedule to have this meeting. A quick update on where we stand at the facility. As you folks know, we've got a depopulation order requiring us to be to a maximum of 20 inmates by April the 10th. The jail was already in the process of doing that, but it's not just as simple as contacting a local confinement facility and begging to house inmates. There's MOUs that have to be signed on both sides and it's a process. But over the last month and a half, two months at the most, we've moved 77 inmates out of our facility to over half a dozen counties throughout the state, as far west as Cherokee, which, best of my recollection, about a six and a half hour one-way trip. We're scheduled to move 10 more inmates this week to Forsyth County and Harnett County, five each respectively. Friday afternoon, when I left, the population of the facility was 81. That's down from 178. This morning, the population was back to 87, so we picked up six during the weekend. As far as that depopulation has gone, we have now, one dorm, C dorm is completely devoid of all inmates. It is not occupied by anyone. Mr. Nobles and his folks have been over there, looked at the facility, taken some photographs, and are going to address some repairs that they can within their scope of expertise. I had a meeting last Friday with District Attorney Mike Waters, two of his ADAs, and a Superior Court Judge. We're planning to have another, basically, emergency session of court. I believe it was the week of May, the 12th, 14th, something like that, where DA Waters' office is going to try and adjudicate a bunch of cases like they did for us a month and a half ago. I think we lost 33 inmates through the adjudication process. They were either released with time served or got active sentencing or now in the custody department, add-on corrections. So our depopulation efforts are not slowing down, okay? But I would like to reference the letter that Ms. Perry spoke about that we received Friday afternoon. In that letter, they basically placed a mandate on us where by close of business today, I submit to the Sheriff's, Sheriff Training and Standards in Raleigh, a list of 20 current deputy sheriffs that will be assisting to fill in the voids in staffing at the facility. That's a whole lot more complex than me just putting 20 names on a piece of paper. And it is physically impossible to have that done by 5:00. However, I will tell you, Mr. Staten, I'd like to introduce y'all to someone. Folks, this is Mr. Kevin Staten. He's going to be the new major at the facility. His official start date will be Monday. He'll go through his orientation. He's been at the facility most of the day. He's been down there several times, met the staff, spoke to the inmates. So that should prove to be a huge blessing to the facility itself with the decades of experience that he brings. As far as the staffing, we submitted two applications to Oliver Washington. He's a consultant that's helping with his project. He's going to help process those applications. I received a phone call this morning from one of the applicants. Very excited about his prospects coming to work with us. We've got a former deputy sheriff cadet that has accepted a position at the detention facility. He will be meeting in the morning to go over his paperwork, but staffing is still a huge issue. If we cannot get deputies in there, get COs to work their days off, I don't know what the next step is going to be. It's going to be completely up to the secretary's office in Raleigh. So we have come up with a plan with you folks be here and here in a few minutes. And I would truly appreciate your consideration in this. It's, it's not something as simple as me just mandating or the sheriff mandating that a deputy come in and work on his days off. We're already short deputies. We still got four in the BLET program that will not graduate until June, and then they've still got a three-month training process. So it's, it's just, it's not feasible for the sheriff to basically put out an edict to his Uniform Patrol Division that you will work on your days off.
Have you had conversation concerning those, that it is, anyone might be interested?
Yes, ma'am, we have. Yes, ma'am. And there again, that is really going to boil, boil down to what incentive we can provide.
And just a question, do you all have it where they pick up so many extra days per month?
As far as?
The death, the officers, the detention officers? Because I know some other counties do do that.
There, there is absolutely no need for us to do that. As HR Finance, Ms. Renee can attest to, these guys are getting unimaginable amounts of overtime without being requested to. The sheriff and I, I think I spoke about it in previous meetings, we're exempt employees. For those who don't know what that is, he and I, we don't get paid overtime. We don't, it's just part of the title. So when the patrol is short and I can't find anyone to come out, sit with an inmate at the hospital, answer calls on a shift that's short, the sheriff and I personally come out and work. I mean, that's just part of the title. I don't mind doing it. The sheriff doesn't mind doing it. But we don't have enough deputies now to where we could mandate that they come out and work a certain amount of extra hours. So, but they're, they're, I promise you, the patrol division is putting in a heavy load right now.
Are we able to use detention officers and deputies from other counties?
Yes, sir, we can. But here again, it's a process. And, and there again, I've been given a mandate from the state to have something for them by the end of today. I reached out to Training and Standards last week, hoping that there would be some type of truncated process where I could take a CO that was already certified from another agency and bring them in, who works in part-time hours. There is no process that's going to make it any easier for me. They've got to do the F3, they've got to do the F8. The F3 is the application. The F8 is the background check. They've got to be drug screened. They've got to be a physical, if they haven't had a physical in the last 12 months. The only thing that the state will say that we don't have to do is a psychological evaluation. But everything else, the process is, they're no different between hiring a brand-new employee and bringing one over part-time.
So have there been added administration or straight up to help you with the application if this, you talked about that?
Yeah, Mr. Oliver Washington has been a huge help there.
For getting the application process?
Correct. And I'm still processing applications.
What's the issue with you the other day answering, have you?
Yeah, well, all, all applications come directly to me now. They have been since probably the last of January, 1st of February.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to know how many deputies were short and how many people in the center were short? How many employees are we short?
All right, I can give you a rough estimate. Best of my understanding, we had a CO call in and resign effective immediately on Friday. That brings us down to 22 shortages in the detention facility. Let me do the math. Four Uniform Patrol deputies, two criminal investigators, and two narcotics investigators.
Eight to 10, eight to 10 in sheriff's office, about 26, 20, 24 to 26 at the detention center. Very short, and we have not recovered since COVID. I have showed and given candid managers email and text messages. And when I go out to these commissions and sheriff's associations and meetings, I'll stand up before 25 or 30 sheriffs and ask for help for housing. I've reached out week four last and asked if their employees would like to work for us part-time on their days off. And of course, we got to report back to them how much hourly wage we can afford to pay them. Some of the sheriffs said, no, we're in the same position that you are, lack of staffing in our facilities and our detention centers.
But was there an issue with applications already on, in, on hand that had not been gone through to see what they are available because short of the staff administration, somebody going through the application? Did you have application on hand that no one was able to get?
For, for the detention center, that is correct, but Major Mitchell has taken care of that now.
Does the secretary have the ability to waive the requirements of application?
No, sir. The, the question I think you asked a while ago about deputies just working at a detention center, the North Carolina Training and Standards says that a deputy sheriff has to go to the short-track school in order to work at a detention center. We have Lieutenant Guzby and Lieutenant Gregory, only two certified law enforcement officers who are allowed to work at a detention center as a detention officer, and that's across the state.
There's no emergency waiver process?
The letter that the DHHS sent, said send this to the Training and Standards, lest they know something I don't know, but that's come down from the Training and Standards that a deputy sheriff has to go through the fast-track school to work at a detention center. Of course, they are working at detention centers across the state and we have utilized them, but this is a requirement that they be dual-certified.
Commissioner Bremet, we had a phone call Tuesday that the sheriff was not on, that I believe they said something different about current deputies may roll through and provide temporary assistance for staffing in situations like this, which leads towards why that one paragraph in the Friday letter said what it said regarding the current deputies.
If I could add to that, I did reach out again to the Sheriff's Training and Standards this morning. I have not received a phone call back, but I know they're busy. But I did reach out to them this morning because the placement of deputies in the facility is, it's not a permanent thing. It's a temporary thing. So I'm hoping that they will give us a waiver where we don't have to try and schedule 20 deputies to go to this short school because, good Lord willing, I'd love to have the deputies out of their 60 to 90 days tops. Because now with some assistance processing applications, good Lord willing, again, within that 60-day, 90-day period, we'll have new staffing that have been through the process and are working. And that would negate the need to have deputies come in, unless, of course, emergency takes place. But I did reach out to Training and Standards this morning to ask, to answer the same question you had.
So if you have a new detention officer, it takes them a year to be certified, right? So either way, they're not certified and because they can be in the facility for a year.
Yeah, now, the, the two applications that are being processed right now by Mr. Washington, they're already certified.
Okay.
Now, just as it is with the deputy sheriff, well, it used to be, we can hire COs in those positions and we have 12-month period to get them certified. So yes, even if we have an applicant that is not certified to be a corrections officer, wants to work with us, we can hire them, get them trained, get them working, and somewhere in that 12-month period, get them in, in the class.
Another point of the letter was contraband. Where are we on that?
Yeah. Well, without going, getting into too much personnel issues, if you recall, we lost three COs with the stroke of a pen that, that just, they just, they weren't a good fit. Let's put it that way. We lost those three. And somehow the contraband has slowed down, not saying it's completely stopped, but it is dramatically, dramatically slowed down. The plan that I have in this file, depending on what the pleasure the board turns out to be, will be submitted to Raleigh as soon as this meeting is over, I address the contraband. We're putting a policy in place, once the deputies, if, if it's authorized for deputies to go into the facility, that no correction officer, no CO will have any single contact with any inmate for any reason in that facility. They will always be two. It would be two COs or it'd be a CO and a deputy sheriff. Folks that would be so inclined to maybe pass something that they weren't authorized to do, likelihood of that happening with a deputy sheriff with powers of rest stating beside you is all but zero. We've also put in place policy, we're leaving the facility random times throughout the day to quote-unquote, "take a smoke break." Those days are over. We have a screening policy that has been put in place for employees when they arrive. If they do have to leave the facility for their duties of transportation or whatnot, they're subject to the same search procedure when they arrive back in the facility. All of these things, working together, will eliminate the contraband problem.
Is that search included using machine that's there?
We will be not, we will not be using the body scanner.
Wow. I want to know why. It's a machine that money was spent.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It, it is, it is used every day, every day for inmates, coming and going.
Not inmates, I'm talking about.
I, I understand, but the level of intrusiveness with that piece of equipment is my understanding, it's, it's probably something we don't want to go down. We have ordered, and good Lord willing, be here today sometime this week, two standalone units, cell phone detectors and metal detector that the sheriff and I had to experience when we went to Edgcombe's facility. But until such time, if, if someone says there's no legal issues, no ramifications can be had by putting employees through these body scanners, I'm not going to recommend it until someone with more.
I've said that two years ago.
So I wish specific.
Based upon the problems that we are having, we may use that machine for, for our employees because of the issues that we are consistently having.
And so can I, I just want one comment as well. So when you talk about the level of intrusiveness, can that not be adjusted up or down to decrease the level of intrusiveness?
No, ma'am. And then each time you do it, you got to have somebody of, of the opposite sex to be on the other end of it to, to run the scan. As, I know of 24 to 26 throughout the state of North Carolina, and I've asked those sheriffs, and, and from that county perspective and from the sheriff, that's sheriff, don't do it. Don't be the first one to do it. No, no, I'm not. It, it's, it's for inmates only, searching, searching inmates only.
But the inmates are not bringing in the drugs?
They are bringing them in because our people are not doing what they're supposed to do, ma'am.
Because they are, they are, they are, it's been stated, and I'm not mistaken, I've heard you say, we know that employees are bringing in.
And, and I will say it again, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And it's not only Vance County, it's across this whole state of North Carolina. Any sheriff, this gentleman would tell you the same thing, where he came from, they had their issues.
Across of North Carolina, they're not having the issues that we have today.
You'd be surprised. They just have a much better facility than we do.
For 200 people from, from state, and I was just overwhelmed by that conversation that we're in the predicament that we are in. And especially purchase those items that machines that cost, I'm, I'm pretty sure it wasn't cheap. And like I said, they are part of the issue, so it should be part, be used for the scan, the employees as well, because that's where it's coming from outside as well.
I understand your position, but as sheriff of Vance County, I will not take that, that responsibility.
We understand. We've heard that several times as well. But I'm just saying, but because of the issue where we stand at being mandated, at being in a crisis, being threatened to be taken over, it's, it's just unreal to me right now.
You're telling us the difference in that machine, when I go to the airport in terms of flying, that they, they, they scan me. What, I don't have any choice when I fly?
You fly because voluntarily, those, those employees.
People that are coming to work, if they're coming to work, I'm sure at the airport, if I'm flying, they don't have any choice when they go through the machine.
Or not fly.
Would there be an option to use it? Would you have calls to believe that they may be bringing something in?
As the county attorney said, I believe we could possibly get by that, but to do the, to employees on a daily basis, two, three, four times a day to go through that machine, I would not do that.
But them being aware that they may have to go through it could create a security, a greater sense of security. That's, that's just my thoughts.
I, I guess I'm along with Dan, along that line. If, say for instance, if you just have random checks, you don't know who going to get checked on a given day, then therefore a person knows, all you, all they saw on tickets, my person getting charged with a felony for doing that. Then you're not going to have a whole lot of people knowing that could be rent, that could be their day of, that they're going to catch a felony like that and, and, and taking a hard-nosed approach that if you're bringing in contraband in there, you're going to catch a felony.
Well, I hope what Major Mitchell has, is going to have in place is going to remedy a lot of this, ma'am.
Excuse me?
I hope what Major Mitchell have in place is going to remedy a lot of our problems of people bringing contraband into our facility.
Sheriff, I have a question.
Sheriff, I have a question. Captain Washington, how do you all do at Edgecombe as far as personnel?
There's nothing.
Come on up.
I ain't see you come on in, come on in.
Y'all put me on the spot. Uh, and listen to what's being said, I use it. I use the body scanner randomly. Uh, if I have a problem with drugs coming in, and then I'll randomly search my staff. But what I do do is, I have the female, I do the female and a male do the male. And the reason for that is very intrusive. You can see the body parts, um, of the person that's being scanned. So you want to be careful not to embarrass staff. Uh, plus the radiation that could possibly be, um, obtained from the body scanner. So randomly, yes, I would suggest, uh, the idea that you all came up with is one that will work. And we do that with routine searches of staff coming in as well. Uh, staff are aware that they could be routinely searched at any time. So if I have a problem, what I do is I'll have my supervisor, because you can't trust every supervisor. So I have supervised my lieutenants, I will have them come in early and they will randomly search staff coming in. I may do it on the weekend, I may do it in the evening, but they don't know when it's going to happen. So they are not aware, so it kind of keeps them honest. Because they don't know when the, uh, body scan is going to happen, they don't know when they're going to be routinely searched. So yeah.
Thank you.
Do you ever use the dog?
Uh, yes, uh-huh. We take the dog through the facility, uh, to do searches, uh, as well. And I was just informed by my sheriff that there is a cell phone dog, um, that one county has and we're going to probably try to get that, uh, dog in sometimes to do some searches as well, because their cell phones are our issue, so yeah.
What I think randomly doing cuts down on, cuts down on the problem.
Yes, it, it minimize. Never, let me say this, I've been doing this business 39 years. I don't care what you do, you're not going to stop at all, but you can minimize. When you have practices and procedures in place and you have people to enforce those, that is the key. It's having people who are going to enforce it, to minimize the flow of contraband into our facility. So, yeah.
Thank you.
When's the last time a facility search was done?
Are you talking about the entire facility or dorms?
Dorms, whatever, I mean if.
We, we, I do at least one dorm every week, two weeks at the very latest. Now, um, as far as a full facility, three months ago, four months ago, we did an entire, uh, search of the facility. Uh, I think we talked about it in the past, we had units come in from multiple different counties, deputy sheriffs, corrections officers, and we went in there 60, 80 deep and, uh, and searched the facility.
At what point does it get bad enough we need to call in the National Guard?
At, at that, at that point, we weren't far from it.
But it's sad to say you can punish your inmates, because if a child, you bring my toy, I'm going to play with it. But we can punish the inmates and charge them, but we want employees to run and let them get by. I just don't understand that concept. I have a problem with that.
Yeah, Ms. Fains, this is probably not something that most people would agree with, but I'm a realist.
Me too.
When I went down there and spoke to those 178 inmates, I told them all the same thing, I, I don't fault you, I don't hold you to blame. Because you have nothing to do but sit around and, and scheme and, and find ways to create chaos. The ones that I fault are the ones that are delivering the contraband to you, that are supposed to be no, no better and supposed to be held to a higher standard.
Yes, exactly. That's my issue.
If, if I was in a facility, good Lord willing, that will never happen. I don't even speak, I can't, I can't see at night to drive. But if I was in a facility and I had the means to pay someone $1,000 for a cell phone so I could talk to my family in private, I'd do it. The issue is the contraband coming in.
Yes.
But in, in my mind, I think that the greatest success will be in no single contact with inmates. None, for any reason.
You have a problem with, you realize in terms of employees and everything, is in terms of the inmates, in terms of family visiting, are they bringing in stuff too?
No, sir. They, they don't have access to, to touch the inmate or get close to them.
They come to visit, what, how is that?
It's all glass and a, a telephone mic.
Okay, okay.
Now, I, I, I will add this, um, we had a situation, two and a half weeks ago, two weeks ago. You know, if an inmate complains about some type of medical condition and the nursing staff, you know, they're not doctors. So they're not going to say yes or no, they're going to err on the side of caution. Uh, inmate was transported, uh, by deputy sheriff to the hospital here in Henderson. When they arrived back at the facility, they had a bag, a package of contraband, had cigarettes, two or three cell phones, chargers, cigarette lighters, all neatly packaged in a bundle, about yay big round, about that long. The only time they were outside the presence is the deputies when they went to the bathroom at the hospital.
So when they came back to the facility, how did they get it past the check?
They did.
No, they didn't. They caught it.
Yeah, we, 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 we got the contraband. Um, as we said, there's a process now in place where inmates leave and or return. They're searched and they go through the body scanner. And of course, it was located. But that clearly came from outside the facility because the inmate did not have it when they left to go to hospital. They had it on their return.
Let me ask you this, since the beginning of this year until 2025, has any inmates, I'm going to say any guards been charged with bringing contraband in?
No ma'am.
And in your searches, do you have, um, a list of all the contraband that has come into the jail that weren't brought by the inmate?
Yes ma'am. We still actually have the contraband itself.
And you weren't able to identify where that contraband came from?
Not to the point of taking out a criminal indictment.
And you did sit down with the district attorney and discuss that?
Right. Now, there again, there's things I can't discuss in a public setting. But I think most of you should already be aware that there are things, um, underway. And the only thing I will tell you is the same thing that I told the staff at the facility, I do not investigate my own. If investigation needs to be held, we get outside assistance to do that.
Now, let me ask you this question, and, and I don't know how true it is, but there's a rumor going around that they were in there eating Bojangles chicken, some of the inmates.
That's not a rumor.
So it did actually happen? So you weren't able to identify who brought that chicken in? Because the inmate couldn't, went to Bojangles, so it had to be one of the guards had to bring it in?
Well, what happens when you've got five ordering from the same place and having a DoorDash delivered to the facility?
Okay, so DoorDash delivered the chicken and then somehow they, one of the guards gave the inmates the chicken?
I, I don't even, that particular incident you're referring to, there again, it's not a rumor. Um, there was a video or picture taken by an inmate with a cell phone posted to social media. So we all know it happened. That particular breakfast treat was not DoorDash, it was brought in by a CO.
Is the CO still employed with us?
CO is not employed.
So was that the first time that had happened or where are you aware?
There, there's no way to tell.
I mean, that you thought?
That, that's the first time that I had heard of it or seen anything like that posted on social media. But there again, that, the, this, the CO in question does no longer work for us and that, we presume that cell phone was recovered.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I apologize. What, what are we doing about them? What's the image in relation to this emergency pay policy? What is that all about?
Are you ready to move on to that?
Yes, we're going to move on. She's going to put that, trying to put things in place to, um, that's some of these efficiency, Commissioner.
So I have a proposed emergency pay policy, which will provide an incentive for, um, those staff members to work additional hours, um, in the detention center. And so the proposed policy is, uh, $50 on top of what their regular hourly rate is for a short period up to two pay periods for now. And of course, if we need to request an extension, we can do that. But it would allow, um, the deputies to come in and work in the facility for an additional $50 per hour. And that would be eligible for, um, it would be non-exempt employees and exempt employees would be eligible for that incentive for a short period of time.
For an additional $50?
On top of their hourly rate and, and the off-duty rate is $40. And so that's why I chose a higher rate, because they can't mandate them to work, so.
So that mean they can make up to $100 an hour, that what you're trying?
Possibly when they go into overtime, yes. And we do have the budget impact, Stephanie can provide that for us. Can you come provide that for us for, we have the budget impact for two months.
You said that's for two time?
Two pay periods only right now, yes. And so we have the budget impact for 60 days.
You say the length of time?
Right now, it's up to six, two pay periods for now.
And that's how, two pay periods is how long?
Uh, eight weeks.
Eight weeks?
Uh, so they're on a 28 day cycle, yes sir. And of course, we, we need to bring it back to the board to extend it, we'll do so. But Stephanie can give you the budget impact.
Hello, everyone. So in talking with, uh, when Major Mitchell came to speak with us, he said we'd need to be three additional people doing a 12-hour shift. So we calculated that times the $50 an hour, so there's a daily cost of 1,500. Then when you factor in the FICA retirement 401K, the, um, estimated daily cost about 20, 2,300. And then multiplying that out by 30, uh, 30 days a month. And they were very dependent upon their schedule because they'll, they would be on the 28 day schedule. So we're looking at about $69,000 a, a month. And, uh, so there is some additional funds available because there are about 28 vacancies with salaries, health insurance, uh, FICA retirement that we do have available. So at this time, we wouldn't need, not need to do a budget amendment as for additional funding.
So it's already budgeted?
Yes, ours in the budget.
But it's 69,000 a month?
Yes, yeah.
You won't know the net until you're timed though because of.
Right.
You're short in over 30 people.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
I make a motion, we do it.
Got a motion and a second and a discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes heavy.
And I did have one more thing for consideration. So we did a comparison for the minimum, um, minimum salary for our detention officers as compared to surrounding counties. And so I am proposing that we move the entire detention series up one pay grade, um, just to make us more competitive for recruitment. So, um, my recommendation is to take the minimum for the detention officer from 40,542 to a minimum of 42,367 effective immediately. And so the other positions that are affected in this same pay grade or same class would be the detention officer trainee, which would move up one, one grade as well. Um, the detention officers I spoke about earlier, detention center food services supervisor, detention liaison officer, detention shift supervisor, detention center supervisor, which is the lieutenant. The assistant detention center administrator would go from 70 to a 71, but the detention center administrator would remain at a grade 76. And I recommended a one grade increase because when you shift one grade, you have to shift all of them. So that's my recommendation for that. You have the numbers for that as well, Stephanie? And so this would be the immediate impact, but we would need to budget for it for next year if the board desires to move forward with that.
So the additional salary on a monthly basis, since we're, uh, the total amount is going to be annualized with about $2,500 extra a month.
How much you say, Stephanie?
25 a month.
2,500 a month?
Yes.
Okay.
2,500 for all of?
Yeah, for a month. So when you take out where they are now to where they would go annually and then just divide it out by 12, so.
Oh, per employee? Is it 2,500 total?
No, for the month.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Extra for the month.
With employees, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that if we're fully staffed or is that based on current staffing?
That was based, I looked at all of the staff and so I had all of the, all of the listing. There are some of that were above that. Uh, so they would not be affected by this, but those that were below, I took the difference between the two. So that was all of the positions.
And you said that would make us competitive?
Yes. Yeah. And, um, I do have, hold on for a second, I had that up, but I.
You got it.
Yeah, can you call this out for me?
Sure, comparable data, Nash County is making 42,000, these are all base salaries. Warren County is at 41, uh, Halifax is at 40, Durham is at 50,000. Wake is at 53,000, Person is at 42, Gramble's at 40, Franklin is at 47. And of course, the proposed Vance County will be 42,367. And this doesn't, doesn't include incentives either that some of these counties offer.
42 is the new.
Will be the new.
Yeah, uh, Warren is 41,716. So we are below Warren right now. We are, yes ma'am, we are.
And that's in count, this, that incentive still in place, right?
Which is, uh, uh, it is, the 5,000, Agreta? Yeah, yes ma'am, it is.
We need a motion to further?
Yes, and it, what's the question?
So if we go up to the 2,500 per person.
That's, that's a month for all, she said not per person.
Well, for the positions, then we're going to add the five, we still will be adding 5,000 incentive or will we be getting rid of the incentive?
No, uh-uh, we plan to keep the incentive in place just so we can still have people apply because it's still low, 42 is still low. I mean, but yeah, no, we'll keep that on for sure.
Has sign on, you told me, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. What's the question?
I'll make that motion when we move it.
Second.
You said second. So we have a motion, a motion by Commissioner Hester, a second by Commissioner Kelly, in the discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Eyes heavy.
I have one more thing. I did want to ask the sheriff's office about the jail health contract. Um, jail health, we, we do need to talk about that because I think they've given us notification that in, I believe in July sometime, that they plan to, um, to, um, end their services with us. So do we, do y'all know where we are with that, with the contract? Have you spoken to them recently?
I, I've responded to that letter. This is just my personal opinion. I don't think that they're going to leave our facility. Primarily because of the steps that have been taken and been approved by you folks. I think basically what they were doing, they had genuine concern for the safety of their employees. Uh, at that time, we were sitting around 150, 160 inmates. We're down to 86 with 10 more leaving. Uh, with the addition of the, the deputy sheriffs coming in, corrections officers coming in, working their days off, which you folks just, uh, allocated funding or approved funding for. I'm confident that they will be satisfied for the safety of their employees. Um, that conversation was had and I told them, I said, you have given me ample time to make the appropriate adjustments and changes in the facility. Now, of course, I can't speak for ACH, but I'll tell you this, before the expiration of their, their timeline that they gave us, there should exist no reason for them to leave us at that point.
Major, my concern is last time we were had 30 days from the notice to them leaving and finding someone new. If we have to do that two and a half years later, I'm not sure we'll get any responses for folks coming in. So obviously waiting, waiting until the end to say, we're going to get it right and fix it, puts you guys in a predicament. And, and I would suggest if you can, uh, give a letter retracting that because we also were right in the middle of trying to modify and amend the contract, um, as well, that's kind of stopped, so.
Okay.
We, we need to pick that back up and move forward if we're moving forward.
All right, well, I'll tell you what I will do if it's a pleasure of the board. I can submit the same plan of action to ACH that I'm going to submit to the secretary's office, which outlines all of the changes. Basically, this is what I would call an anticipatory document. I started on it last week, um, in the hopes that the board would, would move forward with what was presented today and you have. So now I'm, I'm in front of the eight ball instead of behind it. My documentation is ready to go to the state. I can submit that to ACH. And I think that I may be able to get a letter from them retracting their deadline. Um, if not, then I guess my recommendation would be that we start err on the side of caution and start trying to negotiate a contract with another, another entity. And I, we've actually isolated one, um, that we've actually already spoken to.
Okay, we know we have to do RFP, so, and you have the template for you all to work on RFP as well, okay?
I have a question. Um, of the 80.
I have a question. Um, of the eighty-six inmates, are any of them charged with misdemeanors?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I mean, it, it varies. There are misdemeanors in there as well as felons.
Okay, now have you discussed, they're misdemeanors. So you know that time is limited. Have you discussed with the DA about trying to basically just get rid of those, that bulk set of the misdemeanors to clear up some of the other space?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That, those topics were discussed in the meeting, uh, last week that we held at Oxford in, uh, the DA Mike Waters' office. Um, it, it's not as simple as that. All right. If, even if it's a misdemeanor, if there's a victim attached, we have in North Carolina, what's called the Victims Rights Act. The district attorney cannot even request or move forward with a bond reduction, as is has been explained to me, without an ADA reaching out to the victim and getting their input on that. And if the victim says no, then it will not proceed. And I actually tested that. A, a gentleman was charged with larceny from a, a woman's front porch. I can't remember the specific property of some type of lawn furniture. And the ADA called the victim with me sitting there, explaining to him the situation we're in, and the victim did not want the bond reduced. And it was not. So it's, it's not as simple as just saying misdemeanors, let's move them.
But when I was thinking, I was not thinking in terms of bond. I'm thinking in terms of disposition. You know, because basically a misdemeanor is a misdemeanor. I can go to court on my first day and plead on a misdemeanor as charged and I'm going home. I don't even have a bond.
Yes, ma'am.
But what I'm saying now is you're talking about misdemeanor charges. The most they're gonna get is like, um, a level three, like a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, but.
And so if that case is, um, instead of drawing those cases out, continuing, and then let me continue another thirty days, thirty day done, and they're getting credit for time too. So instead of just drawing those cases out, going ahead and expedite, I'm talking about expedition of the cases, not necessarily bond reduction, but expedition of the cases. That victim gonna be notified of that court date. And when that case come up, that victim either gonna be subpoenaed and then they got staff that contacts those people and tell them when their court days off for them people to be there. And if them victims are not there, I've seen plenty, I've been doing it thirty years. I've seen plenty cases that's been disposed of and the victims, um, chose not to come. So you got some people sitting down there, victim not even gonna come to court.
Well.
So we're taking up space that could otherwise have been, um, if those cases, some of those, especially what we're talking about misdemeanors, some of those cases could be.
Well, the, the conversations that I had.
That's why I was asking, had you had that conversation with this attorney to see if some of those, not necessarily bond reduction, because some people just don't have any money. They're not gonna be able to make a bond. But some of the cases can be expedited to go ahead and get disposed of them so that, so they won't be even in the courts.
Here's, here's where I am. Okay. And the boss tell you, I don't have a filter. I just call it as it is, as I see it. I had the meeting with Judge Dunlow, Mike Waters, two ADAs last Friday. What I asked for in conjunction with Mike Waters' office is a big ask. It's a big ask. We're gonna take a superior court judge who is not scheduled that week, conceivably for two weeks. We've got felons in there. We just sentenced one week before last who had been in there for sixty-six months. I mean, the district attorney's office and the judges are willing to work on us and help us, and they have proven that over the last couple of months. But I've got the triage. I've either got to say I want to get these long, longstanding felons adjudicated or the misdemeanors. I've got more felons than I have misdemeanors.
Let me ask you this question. Okay. At one point in time, they had a very good jail liaison person that works between that inmate and that jail system. And that person got them people up there and court. They made, if the, if the inmate wrote a letter, that letter went to that judge. If they, and if they had a concern, whatever, they got in court. And, you know, we have a system now in the, in the criminal justice system. You don't even have to take of some felonies to superior court. You can do I's and H's in district court. So my question to you all is, do you have that liaison person that could be a dead liaison between these inmates and the, the, um, their lawyers and the, the criminal system that maybe expedite some of those low-level felonies so those can be at least disposed of? And those people, along with those misdemeanors, who are taking up space, are no longer having to sit down in there and take up spaces that could be otherwise, um, designated for more serious crime, serious, uh, individuals charged with more serious crimes?
That is certainly something I can have a conversation, uh, with our court liaison. And we've got another meeting scheduled with Mr. Waters anyway. Um, so that is certainly something I can bring up because any way that we can limit the population, I am all for it. One hundred percent.
And, and the question to you answer, no, that person's no longer, that person's no longer with us. We have a new liaison, uh, took that position, uh, what, about four weeks ago? Uh, no, I mean, and nine, four time in that position, in that position. Captain Austin is doing a great job and she's training the person, a new person for that position.
Okay. And in, in the conversations, are you all talking to, um, Department of Social Services? Because I'm pretty sure you have some child support people down there too. Or have you eliminated all of those individuals?
No, we're not have not eliminated them. But Lieutenant Goose, Gooseby does a great job coordinating with, uh, Department of Social Services and the arrangements, trying to get people to come up and pay instead of incarceration.
Okay, so that conversation has been had with the district court judges to see, because see, a lot of them have that purge. And that means they gotta come up with the money to get out, you know, to get out of jail by paying that child support. But if they don't have the money, then they're gonna sit down there and do some time. You never gonna get that money or whatever because they don't have the money.
A ridiculous purge. And I agree, I agree with you on that. Sheriff Peter White and I have argued that since Sheriff White was in office about the purges and bonds on child support and we got nowhere with it. But, uh, we're still fighting that fight.
Okay, so I would like somebody, you know, looking to that, you know, you know, I believe people should pay their child support. But my thing is you got people sitting down there that that support is never gonna happen.
Okay.
Um, because they don't have, they're not working. They sitting in jail. So you're not, you're not gonna get blood out the turn because they, mama's not gonna pay, girlfriend not gonna pay. Not all the time, but most, a lot of time they do pay, but sometimes they don't. Then this tax season, people getting their money up, they're going to get their persons out. But it needs to be, you know, I would stress with the liaison person, working with these people to see who actually can pay and who can't pay and whether some kind of alternative arrangements can be made to try to get these people out of the jail system too. You know, because we are using that as a civil collection agency. And I know the statute provides for it, but then in reality, this is what's happening. And then for us, it creates a diff, difficult situation because we have other more pressing matters and people who are charged, you know, I know we have a lot of, um, individuals charged with, um, capital offenses. Um, and yet you're gonna use the space for somebody with child support where somebody for the capital offense maybe need that space. Or like you said, every week, this is getting ready to be summertime. You know what's gonna happen in the springtime? When people coming out these houses and they getting outside and they're gonna be mixing and they're gonna be mingling and you all gonna have a whole bunch of more people that you all gonna have to deal with.
I would agree.
Because summertime is coming. And you know, we know. And every Fourth of July, Easter weekend, you know, uh, Memorial Day, when you have holidays, a lot of times, don't it, it usually is a little more traffic coming in because people having cookouts and barbecues and all this stuff. And when people get together and you got a weapons issue in Vance County, a lot of stuff is potentially happening. We gotta, you know, consider that in terms of this is sort of a bad time of the year for us to be in this situation. We was going into the winter, we would just be, uh, worried about this, the saying four hots in the cot. People going in just because they want meals in a, in a cot. But right now, um, we, we have the situation that it's gonna be because of people's interaction with, with one another. And I think we gotta anticipate that. So if we can alleviate some of the child support people being there, some of the misdemeanors being there, um, and, and also bond reductions. You know, nobody said that, um, you gotta lower it down to unreasonableness, but sometimes bonds are excessive. But if nobody's looking at it, you have people that's sitting down there with excessive bonds and nobody ever, never leave, they never look at it again once they go to court one or two times. Whereas if it was before somebody, they may would consider lowering those bonds or make it, or doing some kind of creative bonding because you can give somebody secure bond, but you also give somebody partial bond, part secured, part unsecured, you know. But some kind of eye needs to be on it. And like I said, and then some inmates, once they've been down there for a while, if they're not going to court because their lawyer is not doing motions for speedy trials or whatever, they're not doing to bring them up into court, they may be willing, when they sit down there long enough, to reconsider the stance that they initially take and say, well, yeah, I wanna do this now. Mama getting, uh, her, her tax return. She can put a little bit more to it, but I just can't make this full amount. Maybe if you insecure is part of this, not totally eliminated, but maybe unsecure some things that, you know, I just think some discussion needs to be had. That's.
I, I, I can make sure that's included in, in the next meeting that we have. Um, your clerk of court, Henry Gupton, I met with him this morning and he's going to be in the next meeting as well. Um, but I will tell you, I wholeheartedly agree with what you said. Um, in my thirty-plus years, I've said it the whole time, bond is not intended to be a punishment. It is solely intended to guarantee your appearance in court. And I have seen some bonds that in my mind appear to be more of a punishment than, than a guarantee of appearance. So, yeah, those are, I, I, you have my assurances that I will bring that up in conversation.
And especially with that child support, because whether they, they, um, they go to court twice a month. And if they case to continue thirty days, they've already did thirty days waiting on the, to get back in court on child support to get that.
Can I make one clarification, please? Uh, Attorney Carroll was right to the degree, but there's two levels of certification for law enforcement and a detention officer. Training standards sends that certification saying that whether a person is capable or allowed to work as a detention officer or a law enforcement officer. Then it wants successful completion of training, you get another certification. So that list that we need to send to the training and standards, they have to pass the, 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 agree that those names on there can be detention officers so they be dual certified for they're allowed to work at the detention center.
Let me ask a question. The individuals who work at the juvenile facility, are they certified to work at detention centers? Or they, or is that a different level?
I, I believe they are different level. They work for the state. I, I don't know. But you know, Washington, it depends. There's different level. So they have to go through detention officer training. If they work for the state, according to, uh, Mr. Washington, they have to go to a detention officer's, um, certification school.
So even though they maybe have more training at the state level than the local level?
I don't make the rules.
So.
So you all train harder than they do? Or they get more training?
About six big hour training classes, but there's different levels of training, um, that they have to go through.
Okay.
I just have one more thing to say. Um, so unless you all tell me otherwise, we need, my staff and myself need to shift our focus back on things that fall up under my authority, which is my budget, which I have to present to you all on May fifth. And seeing as, you know, they have a jail administrator there, we're shifting our focus back to county administration, not unless you all tell me different. Um, we're gonna focus on the budget as well as, um, any repairs to the building and new construction. So anything else that's detention center or jail related, which falls up under the sheriff's authority.
So we continue to get up there.
Absolutely. Oh, gosh. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, okay. That was it.
And he's starting Monday, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's awesome.
Motion to adjourn? Still moving.